Good evening, Rolling Meadows. This is the June 12th, 2018 meeting of the City Council is hereby called to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands by nature on our ground in the fifth floor with the Republican Party.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Cannon.
I hear.
Budmats.
Present.
Majikis.
Here.
Gallo.
Here.
Banjer.
Here.
Deestis.
Present.
With six present, none absent, we do have a quorum. The first order of business is to approve the minutes from the May 15th, 2018 Committee of the Whole Meeting and the May 22nd, 2018 Council Meeting. Is there a motion to approve those? Mr. Budmats has made that, and there is a second. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I now ask for a motion to deviate for the Fourth of July Youth Parade Marshal Program. Ms. Majikis has made that, and it has been second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay. This is more fun than watching it at home on TV, isn't it? This is the first year that we have a youth parade marshal program for the city of Rolling Meadows on the July 4th. Nine children from the city of Rolling Meadows submitted their applications for the new 2018 youth parade program, where winners will lead the parade in a horse-drawn decorated wagon, be awarded custom T-shirts and a medal to wear that day, and have their pictures and name in the city newsletter. Ms. Zaffron, could you please step forward?
Thank you, Mayor.
I'll turn the mic over to you, and if you would just like to give a little brief history of how this program came together before we start.
My name is Annette Zaffron. I'm a longtime resident of Rolling Meadows. My children went to school all through all grades here, and we're very happy to put this presentation on for you tonight. I'm a member of our Community Events Foundation Committee, putting on lots of wonderful and fun things for the residents. And prior to that, I was on the 60th Anniversary Committee, so we've been doing some fun things for the last few years. Hopefully, a lot more to come. How we came about with this parade marshal contest was that we were trying to come up with ways to think of how we can incorporate and inspire our young people today to be part of our celebration and to understand why we are celebrating Fourth of July. So, we brought it up at a CEF meeting, Community Events Foundation meeting, and the committee was very supportive of the idea. And I asked Lori Czak, our chairman of the committee, more or less, if it would be all right if we formed a subcommittee, so not all the work was put onto one person. So, together with my subcommittee, which consisted of Emily Hager from the Rolling Meadows Park District, Dave Whitney from the city of Rolling Meadows, and various commissions that he is on, Pat Wright, who's sitting in the back today, Tricia Snell. We were our committee, we came up with the criteria, the application, the flyers, all the things that we needed to do to put this together. And I thank them so much for their support and their help to do this. So, we come to tonight, and we have nine participants that I'd like to call up here, all together. We have Eleanor and Fiona Ennis. Come up here and just stand on the side here. We have Lincoln Gersh, Joseph Kandor, Charlotte Cassidy, Ryan Nicole Vilger, Kai Hayes, Elizabeth Kraus, Stella Cassidy, and Jennifer Donahue. So, these are our applicants, and we appreciate that all of you put your time and effort into this. So, Jennifer, you put together a little essay about being a high school freshman and the activities that you're involved in. Color guard, park district employee, and you volunteer. You're involved in water polo, bowling, and you noted that Rolling Meadows started in 1955, and that you liked the Fourth of July because people fought for us. That's a very nice statement. Tell us about your volunteer work.
I volunteer for the park district. And like, I do like volunteer stuff for school, because I'm on Harbor Promise at Rolling Meadows High School.
Okay. And why do we celebrate the Fourth of July?
We celebrate the Fourth of July to like, remember the people who fought for us and like, celebrate, like, why America came to be America.
Okay, very good. Thank you. And Joseph Carlson. Who's Joseph?
Joseph Carlson?
Joseph.
Joseph, Joseph, come on over here. You get to be center stage, buddy. Just go out there, look at Mom and Dad. They're there. None of us are letting you go. You're okay. You're safe here. It's a safe haven. Go ahead.
So, you wrote about that your birthday is in July. Please silence your phone.
Thank you very much.
And you wrote that you get together with your family to celebrate something. So, why is July a happy month for you?
It's my birthday the first day of July. And like, around then, usually, my dad's parents usually come sometimes, or we go there. And we don't usually get to see them a lot.
Okay. And which do you like better, the parade or the fireworks?
Probably the fireworks.
Good for you. Okay, thank you. Lincoln Gersh.
Rebecca.
You wrote that your birthday's also in July. And you have four generations of family in Rolling Meadows. And that your dad works for the city of Rolling Meadows Public Works. Yeah, that's very nice. So, you say you're proud of living in Rolling Meadows. How does pride make you feel? What is that feeling you get?
I'm very happy and very excited.
And do you know what your dad does at work?
I build stuff.
Build stuff? Congratulations, Dad. You build stuff. All right.
Eleanor Ennis. Eleanor.
Hi, Eleanor.
Okay. You provided us a flash drive. You told us about a grandfather being a parade marshal in the Fourth of July Parade, and that you're involved in a dance, soccer, fundraising for Ronald McDonald House. So, tell me, how did you decide to put your entry on the flash drive? Did you talk about that, or how did you decide on that? So, Annette, can you tell us a little bit about what is Ronald McDonald House?
It's where some people live. People live there. Our mom and dad used to live there.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Fiona Ennis. You also had your entry on a flash drive, and you had pictures of yourselves in there as babies watching the parade with your family. How did you get the photo of Mr. Carmen Vincentiano?
Our mom found it at their house.
Okay. And you said you did, that you're interested in fundraising for Ronald McDonald House. So, what do you know about that?
I know that someone, some people play there.
They play there? Okay. And who was born first, you or your sister?
My sister.
Younger one? Very nice. Ryan Nicole Vilger. Okay. You wrote about a historical fact about Rolling Meadows, starting with Mr. Kimball Hill that founded the city. And you noted that you like to take dance lessons. You talked, so your question is, you talked in your essay about Rolling Meadows being a city of small houses. What's good about a small house?
You don't have to clean up much.
And you take dance lessons. What style is your favorite?
The hip-hop class.
There you go. Okay, thank you. Kai Hayes. Okay, you addressed all three topics in your submission, writing about Rolling Meadows, and that a kid of your age can do, have lots of fun being a kid here. And you're also in martial arts. Okay, your question is, of the four seasons, which is your favorite season?
Out of the four seasons, I love summer the most, because you have the Fourth of July Parade. My birthday's in July, so that's fun. It's near the end of July, and the Fourth of July Parade, it's fun. You get to spend time with family, you have fireworks. It's very exciting.
Okay, thank you so much. Stella Cassidy. It says that you enjoy having a good time with family and friends on the Fourth of July, and you're involved at your church volunteering and leading worship. Okay, so, give us an example of your volunteer work at your church.
So, like, I help out in the preschool, and for their summer camp, I'm helping out for the preschool also. And like, I lead worship, like, I do like motions that help people remember the song and just to get them excited about worshiping.
That's very nice. Thank you so much. Okay, you gave us a colorful picture of a parade in action, and everyone was happy at the parade. And you also help the younger children at church. Your drawings are colorful and have so much life and spirit. Where did you get the idea of all these good things?
Well, July always reminds me of colorful, like, everything's colorful, and everyone gets excited about it, because all the parade floats are colorful, and it's a really fun time.
Since you're only eight years old, how young are the children that you volunteer to help at church?
Well, they're like, three or four-year-olds.
That's good. Thank you so much. Lastly, but not least, we have Elizabeth Kraus. Elizabeth told us about her family's long history in Rolling Meadows, and that, starting with her great-grandfather's participation in this town. And you're also involved in choir. So, who was the person you were referring to as your great-grandfather?
Tom Waldron.
Okay. You know what position? Do you know? Okay, thank you. And what do you like about being in choir?
All can have different parts, and that, like, you can see all your emotions through it.
Good answer. Thank you so much. I hope you agree with me, but I think pretty much so, they're all winners. We really couldn't select one over the other. But there is one thing I wanted to point out. We had one candidate, while you all did wonderfully, Kai did a great presentation, you all wrote some very nice things in your essays, we had one that kind of really stood apart. Lincoln, you want to hold that one up? Now, we don't have an award or a special nomination or anything to designate one over the other. But Kai, Lincoln rather, did a great presentation on a storyboard. He wrote it out all by himself. You can flip that open, Lincoln. He cut up all the stars by himself, put the pictures in. It shows that he took a lot of time and effort to do that. And I think if we had an award, which we don't, excellence would be your category. So, thank you for that. Kai also did a very nice presentation, and it had a lot of pictures in it and was very well-written. So, thank you all for being part of this. We look forward to you being our parade marshals. We'll give you more details in a more private setting to tell you when, where, and what, how, and all those good things. But congratulations to all of you. You did an excellent, excellent job. Mayor, I'm Kai Hayes.
Well, I've been in the city a long time. Elizabeth's mom has been in the city a long time, because, I'm not going to say how long ago, but Elizabeth's mom was a grand marshal when she was in junior high school for the Rolling Meadows Parade. And it was a horse-drawn parade, so that was kind of neat. I want to thank you all for participating. We're going to take about a two- or three-minute recess. Mom and Dad want to come up for pictures, we can do that, and then the meeting, after pictures, if you don't want to stay for the rest of the fun-filled, action-packed, thrill and edgy meeting, nobody here will, feelings will be hurt. So, let's take a two-minute recess and four pictures for Mom and Dad.
Aye. Aye.
All right, we are back on the air. This now brings us to the mayor's report. It has been a busy couple of weeks in the city of Rolling Meadows. I attended the Circle of Success with the Chamber of Commerce. I thank Mr. Gallo for being there. I had the opportunity for, present the award for Business Leader of the Year to AH in Rolling Meadows. We also had a ribbon cutting from Neptune's Cove. I attended a block party in the second ward. Chief, they did a nice job. They brought out the Humvee. We had our dog there, and there was about 150 residents that attended, so that was kind of a great, great time. Also, you know, I can't tout this enough, because this Friday, June 15th, is a grand opening of reps in downtown Meadows. So, for those of you who've been waiting for a restaurant, it's back, and we are here. I also had the opportunity that I met one of our new firefighters, Jack Barlinsky?
Barlowski.
Barlowski, thank you. Thank you for that. And happened to meet him as he was putting his paperwork together up here in City Hall. And I just want to welcome aboard and thank him. Are there award reports? Seeing none. Signatories?
Uh-uh.
No sign-in?
No, that was the lady for the awards.
Okay. Okay, since there are no sign-ins for the signatories, let's bring us to ordinances in for a second reading. Ordinance A is to amend the liquor code to create a G1 liquor license. This is the second reading postponed at the May 8th, 2018 council meeting. This ordinance is adopted. Would create a Class G1 liquor license for video gaming establishments. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance? Mr. Cannon has made that. It has been seconded. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Budmats.
Yes.
Majikis.
Yes.
Gallo.
No.
Banjer.
No.
Deestis.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Four in favor, and to oppose that ordinance is adopted. This brings us to ordinance B, to establish qualifications-based selection process for IDOT, federal and state-funded projects, policy and procedure. This ordinance, if adopted, would establish a policy and procedure that complies with the Illinois Department of Transportation Bureau of Local Roads Manual, Federal Statute 23 CFR 172, State Statute 50 IL CS 510-80, and the Brooks Acts for the selection of engineering services for projects receiving federal or state funding. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance? Mr. Banjer has made it, and there has been a second. Is there any discussion?
Last thing, we discussed this, we had talked about having a larger committee. I don't know if there was any result on that.
All right. Mr. Horn, did you stake that one?
Yes. Staff would typically incorporate a larger group. We wanted to adopt the minimum requirements by IDOT, so that way we can get projects approved in a timely manner. We would typically use three or four staff members, but it was the recommendation of IDOT and the city engineer to adopt the ordinance as requested by IDOT. In a way, there was no concerns.
Thank you. Mr. Budmats, further question? Mr. Deestis?
I'd like to make an amendment that we change it from three people to five people.
Is there a second to that amendment? Mr. Budmats has seconded it. Is there a discussion to amend ordinance B? Yes, Ms. Majikis.
I would just ask, Mr. Horn, does that have any effect, or?
It can be difficult to get five people qualified enough to make a thorough enough investigation of whatever we're looking into. We only have three or four staff members that we would look at internally, plus the city engineer. We can certainly do five. Again, we were trying to keep the, I believe, the minimum, as I look at this, the minimum is two. So, it was increased to a three-person review panel. So, we certainly could increase it to five. It just makes it more of a burden on staff to be able to go through that process if we don't have five people on staff familiar enough with the project we're seeking RFQs on.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further, Mr. Deestis, please?
I think that a five-person committee, they don't all necessarily have to be knowledgeable about the subject matter. I think- I think we've talked about having a finance person or two in there. And obviously they're not going to have it, but I think I would rather make it five and have staff come back to us and tell us why it's not working as opposed to us trying to chase staff down and say, is three working? Because everything seems to get approved right away. So it still would get, we can still approve it at five and then if after six months or a year, you find it not to be working and burdensome, then just come back to the council and say, this really is not working. We need to lower it. So I'd rather put the burden on staff to come back to us than us to say, everything is getting passed and we, you know, and then questioning somebody's integrity, which is not what we're doing.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. We were just, again, I would reiterate, we were just trying to do the minimum requirements so that way we always knew we met the ordinance. We certainly procedurally would typically want more than three people involved. Typical RFQ process to is to request a minimum of four sets of RFQs for review. So we would minimally do four anyways. This was just from an ordinance standpoint. We knew we were always covering the ordinance. So my fear would be is if we were only able to get four to do an RFQ, we were actually violating our ordinance requirement. That's why the number was set lower.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk call the roll on Mr. Deestis' motion to amend ordinance B to five?
Majikis?
No.
Gallo?
No.
Baner?
No.
Deestis?
Yes.
Cannon?
No.
Bud Matts?
Yes.
With a vote of two, four, and four against, that motion does, that amendment does fail, which brings us back to the main motion, ordinance B. Any further discussion in ordinance B? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Gallo?
Yes.
Baner?
Yes.
Deestis?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Bud Matts?
No.
Majikis?
Yes.
With five in favor and one opposed, that does pass. This brings us to ordinance C. In June of each year, the Illinois Department of Labor publishes a list of the prevailing wages to be paid for public works projects. This ordinance, if adopted, will serve to adopt the September 1st, 2017 prevailing wages for the city's public works project. If the city council does not adopt the ordinance, the prevailing wages, which are the same as the exhibited attached to the ordinance, would be applied to the city public works project when adopted. Is there a motion to move this ordinance forward for a second reading? Is there a motion to move this ordinance forward for a second reading? Is there a motion to move this ordinance forward for a second reading? This ordinance does fail for lack of a motion. This brings us to item D, motion to approve the payment of bills out of the June 12th, 2018, is presented by the finance department. Is there a motion to approve the warrant? Ms. Majikis has made that. There has been a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Baner?
Yes.
Deestis?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Bud Matts?
Yes.
Majikis?
Yes.
Gallo?
Yes.
With six in favor and none opposed, the warden is approved. The next item on the agenda is the consent resolution that consists of five items E through I. Does any alderman wish to remove an item from the consent agenda for resolutions? Mr.?
G.
I'm sorry, it was G. Any others? That leaves us with F and H. The chair declares an order for these two resolutions to in one motion without doubt debate. Is there such a motion? Mr. Bud Matts has made that and has been seconded. The question is, shall these two resolutions be adopted? F, Resolution Number 18-R-55, award a contract for the Rolling Meadows Police Station Firing Range Ventilation Project. This resolution, if adopted, would authorize a contract with carry small arms for the materials and construction of the Rolling Meadows Station Fire Range Ventilation Project. H is the Resolution Number 18-R-57, award a contract for the sanitary sewer and storm sewer manhole lighting, lining rehabilitation. This resolution, if adopted, would award a construction contract for the rehabilitation of 29 sanitary sewers and 15 storm sewer system manholes totaling 363 vertical feet at a unit cost of $132.41. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Deestis?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Bud Matts?
Yes.
Majikis?
Yes.
Gallo?
Yes.
Baner?
Yes.
With six in favor and none opposed, those two ordinance pass. This brings us to ordinance, this brings us to Resolution E, Number 18-R-51, award a contract for the emergency generator at Public Works postponed at the May 22nd, 2018 council meeting. This resolution, if adopted, would award a contract with Arc One Electric Incorporated to furnish and install an emergency backup generator for the combined services facility, Public Works North located at 3900 Burnec. Mr. Gallo, you asked us to be cool. You have first opportunity.
I did. Previously, I'd asked the question, how many times in general in the last five years had we lost power and significant power to the facility to where it impeded our progress in functioning or operating for the city? And I don't believe that I've seen that result. And the other part was that had we explored having a key account with a Sunbelt or Hertz equipment rental and just rent an industrial generator if in the event we need to use one?
In regard to the five times, I can only speak to the last three. It's happened twice to where we've been completely immobilized, could do nothing or could not even answer a phone. I requested that Superintendent Wenzel come tonight to provide information on the technical aspects of the generator and the rental he has the most experience with. Also, on the council's behalf, Chief Valentino had requested that any questions regarding the emergency management aspect of these be directed to him. So I'll let Don answer.
Regarding the question on Herc Reynolds, I did reach out to Herc Reynolds after the last council meeting when we brought this to you. And Herc Reynolds provided me with a quote for it. For the generator that would be needed at our facility, they would, we could pay as you go, but if we, that did not ensure that a generator would be available if we needed it. If we wanted to enter into a contract with them to make sure that they had a generator when we need it, we would have to pay the annual fee for it, which is $6,081 for a four week period, which comes out to $79,053 per year for them to guarantee that they would have a generator available. Any generator rental that we would do, we would still have to do the $70,000 internal electrical work to the transfer switch in order to be able to accommodate a rental generator.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Point of order.
Yes, correct, yes, sir.
Don, we need to have a motion to?
Yes, we do. I pulled it beforehand. Can we have a motion for ordinance E, please? This has been seconded. Thank you. Sorry, Mr. Gallo, your discussion started early, so go for it. Any other question?
I guess my question is, have you explored other vendors that?
I have. I've talked with, I've talked with Sunbelt. I've talked with, I have one other vendor that I reached out to and they, the same thing. I mean, they, they won't guarantee that they will have a generator if they have one. Obviously, they'll rent it. The delivery and so on, depending upon when we would need it. If we needed it on a, you know, on a Sunday, it's double time and a half for them to deliver it. If we needed it on a holiday, it's triple time. So, I mean, just because, you know, we enter into a contract with them for it does not necessarily mean that if there was a widespread power outage, that they would guarantee us that we would have a generator.
Okay, and we don't currently have an existing contract to rent equipment or machinery from any one of them.
We currently rent from Sunbelt and for the special events several times a year. But again, even with our special events, they, you know, they're, they're very specific. I mean, pick it up at 2:00 on Friday and have it back by 7:30 on Monday. But there is, you know, because we have rented from them, you know, that they will do their best to make sure they have it. But there's, unless it's paid for ahead of time, there's no guarantees.
Sure, thank you. Yeah, I happen to have some experience in the past, previously with having received generators from power that's gone out for facilities of ours. And we did have that overhead upfront cost. But, you know, the prices for the equipment were $600 a day at the most or $1,500 for a week or $5,000 for a month. My concern is that the quarter million dollar capital expense, I don't know necessarily outweighs the price of maybe exploring this next year, just using a rental opportunity.
Well, if I can, Mr. Gallo, the, for the size of generator that we would need for our building to run everything is $879 a day is the rental cost for, from Herc Reynolds. You know, so, but, you know, when we need it, it, you know, if the power goes out at 8:00 at night or the power goes out on Saturday morning to be able to get it, that, that's the problem. And, you know, if it's, you know, let's say that it was because of an ice storm or something, getting it may be the problem. So, you know, just because we have a contract doesn't guarantee that it's going to be on site.
Sure.
And if, if we can't get our truck out to even go get it, it's not really going to do any good to have a contract.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
No.
Any further discussion? Mr. Cannon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This afternoon, we had a vehicle replacement committee meeting and we talked about this extensively at my urging. Everybody was in that room, understood where I came from. I was, what my disappointment was, is that we were asked at the last meeting to approve a $240,000 expense with virtually no information in our hands. And to me, that's kind of embarrassing. I just don't understand why that was done. I'm not trying to put a blame on any one person, but it's just unacceptable. In the seven years I've been here, I've never been confronted with a situation like this before where we've had such a large expense with so little information. I won't speak for anybody else but myself. I had no idea that we needed $70,000 worth of electrical work done in the building to get this thing to work. I see, I understand that there's needs for this, but in light of the fact that we're going to have another tax increase next year, we've had a tax increase this year and the year before, and with all the other needs we have, I would suggest we just put this off for a while. Somehow, we've made ends meet for 30 years without it. I know it's not what some people want to hear, but we just have so many huge expenses hitting us. I think we really need to be prudent right now and try to protect the taxpayers a little bit and think about putting this forward in another year or two when we have better and better money situation. Anyhow, thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Cannon. Mr. Deestis?
Thank you. I will be supporting this. I think this is vital to the city. I don't want there to be an incident or an emergency and we are not equipped, as Mr. Wenzel has stated, if power goes out, we lose it all. We can't even get our trucks out the door. What are we supposed to do? And as is stated in our packet, you know, it is budgeted for $275,000 in the 2018 budget. And the Park District is picking up 34%. Am I correct on that? Thank you. So I think it is a disservice to our citizens and a safety concern, you know, not to be proactive and do this and protect them. And we've all seen the violent weather that we've had recently. So it's, it's Illinois. You don't know what's going to happen here. So I am in full support of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Mr. Deestis?
Yes. Pardon me, but how many times has, have we lost power at that building in the last five years and for what duration?
In the last five years, we've lost power, I'm going to guess, 10 times.
Okay, I would, without having, you're guessing and answering, Mr. Wenzel, and I'm, I'm looking for, you're asking me to spend $250,000 of the city's money on a guess. I can't make a valid, the question was asked last week or two weeks ago. And if you don't know, five years, what's the last three years? I mean, obviously, we haven't had it there since the building opened and the city's been able to function. So I need an answer in order for me to make a positive vote on this.
Thank you. Anything, any other discussion? I will just ask Mr. Horn, Rob, that our, this is our emergency center, correct?
Yeah, there's some significant emergency management documents that we've approved at city council level that I think it would be good for the city council to know from, from Chief Valentino, some of the background on the emergency management aspects of the generator that we really have been deficient on. As I said, I've only been here three years, but I can tell you that this is the very first thing I put, I requested we put in our capital plan in 2016 when we had our capital project meetings. It is, it is very rare that a building, a public works department of this size and stature does not have emergency power to function in an emergency event. I can just say that based on my experience in the industry, but I think Chief Valentino could be more descriptive in, in some of what Rolling Meadows has approved in the past.
Chief, could you speak to that for a moment? Because as I went through the packet, I did see what the council has approved in the past for emergency management.
Right, right. So we did approve the, an update on our emergency operation plan on December 19th of 2017. And this was a three-year endeavor. And just to bring everybody up to speed, the intent of an emergency management, we do have a city emergency management team with all the stakeholders from all the departments. And really, what we're doing is, the intent of emergency management is to prepare, plan, mitigate, and recovery. That's the base, the four basics in emergency management. There is a essential emergency support function in our emergency operations plan that is available and that we do, that was just adopted. And basically, if we go to, on page 76, it says, "The public works and engineering annex of our plan does state that provisions of emergency generators, fuel, lighting, and sanitation to support emergency responders at emergency scenes and our emergency operations center," as well as another bullet point in this is maintaining public works communication systems, which Mr. Horn and Mr. Wenzel alluded to during a power outage is totally shut down. That did happen, I understand, two and a half years ago when Mr. Horn became our public works assistant director. And I don't want to state chapter and verse, but I'm available to discuss this at a later time. But there are certain assumptions in the plan. They're also covered and says the city of Rolling Meadows maintains a robust Department of Public Works, which will continue to be responsible for maintaining public infrastructure such as sewer and water mains, surface streets, utilities, fleet vehicles, and public buildings in addition to providing restoration and repair of infrastructure in emergencies. So, I mean, it goes on and on. But in the, basically, an emergency support function designated in the emergency operation plans, which we adopted back in December of 2017, has a need, based on our plan, which was an ordinance and adopted, to have a emergency generator available for public works.
Thank you, Mr. Krumbstock.
I just want to clarify one thing. It goes back to Alderman, Deestis' original question. Technically, City Hall is the primary for the EOC, and then backup would be over at Public Works.
Public Works. So everything that we pretty much have here, we need to make sure is running over it there. And I will tell you that the longest time that I know Public Works has been without power, you got to start using your cell phones, you got to have other opportunities to interact and communicate with Public Works, which was extremely difficult. So again, I understand where Alderman Diastis is asking for additional information, we can go back and we can pull some of our information for that, but I prefer that we just move ahead with this, because there are concerns. I know that the ad hoc committee, Capital Improvement Committee, has talked about this in the past, it's been brought up. I know that people feel a little bit different, there's a lot more information that was in this time than last time, but we wouldn't be bringing you a request without a lot of thought to it. But again, going back to the original question, this is still the primary location for our EOC, and we do run both areas. We do have drills in the past at that other area, and again, it does need to be addressed that we do have some deficiencies over at that building.
Thank you. Mr. Horn, anything else to add to this?
I don't have anything to add.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Gallo.
May I follow up one time with Chief Valentino, real quick, briefly? You mentioned we have an obligation for maintaining sewer and water, and it's my understanding that we already have generators available to maintain the sewer and water at this time? Or is that...
Again, I believe very strongly that we're deficient in that area. I will also say that the main brain operation that runs our entire water system is housed out of Public Works and is not backed up by an emergency power system.
Okay, and then you mentioned it's a multi-year plan approach, a three-year plan approach?
I don't remember saying that three-year. I don't remember.
Jalen, one at a time here, please.
So what happened was, we updated our emergency operation plan, it was three years in the making, yes.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Chaykas?
Sorry, just a note, excuse me, comment, just one last little thing. But, you know, as I, you read further in the packet, it states that there are safety concerns when utilizing the building in a compromised condition. And just so everybody remembers, you know, on May 22nd, we were awarded the National Weather Service for outstanding efforts with the community. And I'm reading this verbatim, and so this award was made possible by all the city's first responders, including Public Works Police and Fire Departments. So it, when you're seeing that this is something that is a very big concern for the safety and the running of the city, and in difficult times and stuff, and here we were just recognized for something, and now we're trying to, I don't know, make it difficult to do the right thing. So just wanted to add that.
Thank you. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Cannon?
No.
Bud Matts?
Yes.
Chaykas?
Yes.
Gallo?
No.
Baner?
Yes.
Diastis?
No.
Fail for, that resolution does fail on a 3-3 vote. That brings us to Resolution G number 18-R-56, "Approve Land Acquisition for Portion of Two Properties on Euclid Avenue Bike Path for Bike Path Improvements." This resolution, if adopted, would approve land acquisition agreements for portions of the property to accommodate the proposed construction of the Euclid Avenue Bike Path Improvements immediately to the west of Salt Creek. Do I have a motion forward? Mr. Baner has made that, and we have a second. Mr. Cannon, you have pulled G, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've been opposed to this since we started this years ago. The project now is approaching $1 million in costs for 5/8 of a mile for a bike path, even though we don't have to pay for all of it. This is just completely out of control, in my opinion, so I won't be voting for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Mr. Bud Matts?
Yeah, I looked up these properties in the Cook County Assessor's website. The land value for each of these properties is approximately $50,000 without the improvements, and we're paying about $30,000 to buy approximately 10 to 15 percent of that land. So we're paying a huge price for something that's, I feel like such a frog in a pot of boiling water on this project. And it's a joke that we're spending, as Mike says, a million bucks on a, or somebody's spending a million dollars on a bike path, so, of which we're picking up a portion of it. So I understand there's considerable loss if we do not pass this, and cost to the city more than it would cost us to purchase this, but I think the next time that we look at a bike path or some joint project like this, I will be very slow to approve it.
Thank you, Mr. Bud Matts. Further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Bud Matts?
No.
Chaykas?
Yes.
Gallo?
Yes.
Baner?
Yes.
Diastis?
No.
Cannon?
No.
So for lack of a majority, this Resolution G does not pass. I do believe I need to follow up with Mr. Horn here, because, go ahead, Mr. Horn.
Yeah, I just want to make sure the city council is aware that if we, by not approving this tonight, the project cannot happen. We will lose all the money, and we will have created that issue with the city, the Village of Arlington Heights, and the state for any future grant fund availability. If we, by not approving it tonight, we will not be able to meet our required deadline for grants. The grant application process establishes very specific timeframes for us, and we will not be able to hit our timeframe by not approving it tonight. So I apologize for not being able to provide that earlier, but it's a format that we're using, so I just wanted you to...
Thank you. I will just inform the council that if the two people who voted against it, if we got a motion and a second, we consider the vote. If we do not have a vote from two Aldermen that voted against it, then the vote stands. Mr. Diastis?
I make a motion to reconsider.
Mr. Gallo, seconded. Any discussion on the motion to reconsider?
Wait, Gallo was a positive.
Mr. Gallo, seconded. You voted yes, I'm sorry. Sorry, I need someone that voted no, sorry. Mr. Bud Matts voted no, thank you. Thank you, Mr. ... We have, so we have a motion on the floor to reconsider. Is there any other discussion? Mr. Diastis?
On the motion to reconsider, I would just ask, we're reconsidering because of more information, and I think that more information should be brought up, especially with and when there is a contentious issue like this.
Any further discussion? Mr. Cannon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to go on record, I have been against this since day one, when we started from a conceptual standpoint, so I feel no obligation to change my vote. And also just make kind of an obnoxious statement, but you know, the Village of Arlington Heights has done us no favors on almost any issue I can think of over the last few years. Every time we ask for anything to work with them, they are uncooperative at minimum. So I don't think that should be an argument to pass this just in itself. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Will the clerk call the roll then, please?
Chaykas?
Yes.
Gallo?
Yes.
Baner?
Yes.
Diastis?
Because I have to, yes.
Cannon?
No.
Bud Matts?
No, because I can.
Resolution does pass, 4 to 2. So then, the motion to reconsider passes, and we now need to go back to Resolution G. Resolution number 18-R-56, "To Approve the Land Acquisition for Portions of Two Properties on Euclid Avenue for the Bike Path Improvements." These are two separate land acquisition agreements for the properties that were mentioned. The Euclid Avenue Bike Path Improvements immediately to the west of Salt Creek. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Gallo?
Yes.
Baner?
Yes.
Diastis?
My arm was twisting in the wind. Yes.
Cannon?
Still no.
Bud Matts?
No.
Chaykas?
Still a yes.
The resolution does pass, 4 to 2. That brings us to Resolution I, number 18-R-58, "To Approve the 2018 Street Program. Change Order Number One for the Edge of Payment Gutter Installations on Woodcliff Lane." For the currently ongoing 2018 street program specific to Woodcliff Lane, do I have a motion to move this forward? Aye. Mr. Chaykas has made that, it has been seconded. Mr. Gallo, you were the one who pulled this, please?
Yes, I just would like to get a little bit more clarity on the overall scope of work. From my understanding, the literature that we were provided in per engineering, I believe, mentioned that with severe precipitation, it causes erosion as a result of not having curbs in place, which is also causing erosion in the culverts next to the road as well. So that is leaving me to believe that there is not currently a curb on this roadway, correct?
Yes, correct. It is a residential cross-section. We originally designed this without curb and gutter, basically to try and get as much roadway done as possible. We needed to wait until a certain amount of the construction project was completed to understand that our quantities were in line with what was originally proposed. We felt that it was an appropriate time to bring this to the council for consideration, because we feel that, based on the future work, we can absorb this additional cost and bring the cross-section up to something that's more consistent with city streets.
Okay, I'm happy to hear that we can absorb the cost, that's comforting. One of the things that I've learned in asking a few companies about this scope of work, the going rate for removal and replace, meaning take an existing curb out, take and regrade and add a new curb, is $25 a linear foot. And when looking at our run of 1,075 feet and the price of 36,939 feet, we're already at about $34 a linear foot, which is about $10 over than not having to take a curb out and just put a curb in. And if we're excavating, we can use that soil, instead of hauling away for another expense, use that to regrade to bring back the degradation that's occurred. So how do we get to this price?
I would have to confer with the engineer. My assumption is, the concrete curb, you are correct, is usually anywhere from $19 to $26 a foot, so it's spot on. My expectation is, it includes the excavation, that requires a different type of equipment to come on site and remove, plus there's installation of four to six inches of gravel that has to be paid. So my guess is, is that's, I don't have a per ton cost, but I, my expectation is the $10 per foot is contributed to excavation and placement of stone and compaction.
Okay. Thank you. I'm sorry, go ahead.
But no, no traffic control, or no inlets or catch basins returns, or anything like that?
No.
Okay.
No.
Thank you. Any, Mr. Cannon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Rob, one of the questions I would ask is, you know, year in and year out, we pay our engineer a lot of money every year. Why, you know, this area, this is not a new event, it's worse this year than it's been in other years, but this is not just a new problem. Why hadn't he, you know, we paid him, what, $50,000 or $60,000 to do preliminary engineering? Why wasn't this offered up at the beginning?
It was identified, we made a conscious decision to not put it back in, because we had concerns about the cost, because of, we had some significant storm sewer improvements that were part of this project, and we were concerned that those storm sewer improvements were going to push our budget too close to...
So let's take, you know, I know along the side of the road, especially when you're going southbound on Meacham itself, all the water that comes out there, this year is really severely eroded that area.
Yes.
Will this solve that issue?
It won't solve that issue, but it will, it will solve similar issues that are occurring within the subdivision. I will tell you, that issue, we are working with the future developer of that corner site, plus the county to, excuse me, the state, to rectify their swales all along Meacham. They're all in very poor condition.
So this is going to be on both sides of the street, as it occurs?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any further, Mr. Gallo?
I would just like to express that I would like to see a little bit more competitive rate to this change order than what we see currently today, that's all.
Thank you. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Baner?
Yes.
Diastis?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Bud Matts?
Yes.
Chaykas?
Yes.
Gallo?
Yes.
Six in favor and none opposed, that resolution does move forward. This brings us on to other businesses and reports. The mayor has no appointments, no proclamations. Does the city clerk have a report?
No, Mr. Mayor.
That brings us to city staff reports, community items of interest. Mr. Crumstock?
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. We absolutely have a few things just to thank people, and we do thank all the residents and friends and all the volunteers who worked, participated, again, as the mayor mentioned, at the Friday, June 8th, Fourth Annual Block Party, and we hope to see everybody next year. And we do have people who have given us recommendations, thoughts, comments, and we'll leave it at that. And as the mayor did mention, we have a opening at 3:00 for Rep's Place, but Friday, June 15th is the first scheduled Friday Rock and Roll in the Meadows, and that starts our 2018 season. It does take place between 7:00 PM and 10:00 PM in Kimball Hill Park. We hope to see everybody there. We're putting in for good weather, can't guarantee anything, but as you all know, we'll get you something. You might have to bring a lot of lawn chairs, because it's kind of wet there right now. But June 15th to 16th, that would be Friday and Saturday, the American Cancer Society will be conducting its annual Relay for Life for the Palatine Road Miles and Inverness District, and it will be at Plum Grove Junior High. It begins at 6:00 PM on Friday the 15th, and continues until 6:00 AM on June 16th. And if you want additional information, we do have the website out there. And then if you missed the Saturday, May 26 Farmers and Food Truck Event, the next one is scheduled for Saturday, June 23rd, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And again, this year, we are having it at the Community Church, so if you showed up on May 26 here at City Hall, you had to continue walking all the way back down over there. And Community Church is located at 2720 Kirchhoff Road. The city blood drive will be conducted on Thursday, June 28th, from 1:00 PM to 7:00 PM here at City Hall at the second floor, EOC Room, what we just mentioned a little bit earlier tonight. And then obviously, the Meadows Cruise Nights are back on Friday, and it does happen at Meadows Christian Fellowship, located at 2401 Kirchhoff Road. They're here on Fridays from 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM, and it goes all the way until August 31st. It is family-friendly, they do cook up burgers and other things, if you would like to buy them over there, too. And then vehicle stickers are on sale now. Vehicle stickers do pay for the road projects in fiscal year 2018. Reminder that they do need to be displayed by June 30th. One side note on that one that I do want to mention, if you are a Rolling Meadows resident and you have a Palatine address, and you were contacted by Cook County and said, "Oh, we need a vehicle sticker," Cook County was wrong, they already know, they were trying to do something and someone at their end, but you do need a Rolling Meadows vehicle sticker if you are a Rolling Meadows resident. Friendly reminder, what was mentioned earlier tonight is that the city's Fourth of July Parade is scheduled for Wednesday, July 4th. It does start at 11:30. For more information, please visit our website. And then, obviously, we haven't done this for a little bit, but we should make the footnote, if you do have a crime tip or information that would help the Rolling Meadows Police Department, please contact Rolling Meadows Crime Stoppers at 1-847-290-7867. That's 1-847-590-STOP. The June Eve News and Views is out there on their website, if you would like to visit. And again, you just have to tap onto News and Views, and you will see that. The one other thing that I'll mention, and we'll keep on doing this for a little bit, is the Community Event Foundation has actually scheduled a fundraiser at Chipotle at 1211 Gulf Road on Monday, July 16th, between 4:00 PM and 8:00 PM. And Chipotle would be donating 50 percent of the proceeds to the Rolling Meadows Community Event Foundation. So we will be having more about that. Flyers in the back here at the council chambers, and we'll have them throughout the area. It's another great way for helping out the foundation, who really supports all different events throughout the community. With that, that is actually items of interest at this point in time.
Mr. Crumstock, the presentation of the June 19th committee hall?
We do have a committal hall meeting, other than we have scheduled four Aldermen to be here, so we really need you all to be here. Due to vacations and a vacancy, we do have four items that we do need. The priority of that night will be the fiscal year 2017 audit. You will hear from our auditors, how we ended up with the year. We do need that to be public document, and what happens after that is Finance Department files all the different state, federal... files all the different state, federal Moody's, S&amp;Ps, and all the other TIF reports that we need to do. So we do need to go through that. Again, the auditor is there, they will go over how we are doing with our police and fire pensions and overall looks. We will have a discussion about the signage agreement at Ring Road. When we were talking about SQUIP, the extension, we did talk about that. And then entry markers, we will be having a discussion on that overall. And then we will be talking about our FOG program. I know it's been kind of foggy lately, but this is for fats, oils, and grease program. So we do need to have that discussion in unveiling with some of those pieces. But those are what's really scheduled and written up at this point in time for the June 19th Committee of the Hall meeting.
Ms. Melissa Gallagher, you are up next.
We miss Lori. Friday Rocks.
I think, Lori, did you take over Friday Rocks?
No, I just did the intro.
Okay, I'm sorry, Lori.
And here comes the real thing.
All right.
So for the second year, the city will be hosting the Friday's Rock and Roll in Meadows Summer Concert Series in beautiful Kimball Hill Park. These events will feature popular live music and food trucks from 7:00 to 10:00 p.m. on each of these three dates this summer. This Friday, June 15th, will feature Skip Town and the Greyhounds. On Friday, July 6th, the band Soda will play. And on Friday, September 7th, Centerfold will be featured. So grab your lawn chair and picnic basket for these family-friendly, Ravinia-style events. A special thank you to the Rolling Meadows Park District for sharing beautiful Kimball Hill Park with us for these exciting concerts this year. Thank you.
And thank you, Ms. Ezek. Now, Ms. Gallagher, drum roll, you're it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In the council packet tonight is the first quarter financial statements for the city of Rolling Meadows as of March 31st, 2018. It is just the first quarter, so there's not a lot of trend data, but we're going to go through the packet real quickly for you. Just as a reminder, this is presented on a cash basis. Revenues received and expenditures incurred are attributed to previous fiscal years. So there's some year-end adjustments that we do. Again, this is just first quarter. Just a couple notes up front. The financials program for the ERP, the Enterprise Resource Planning System, went into effect April. So we've got our first report. There's a little bit of a different look and feel to this. We will continue to modify and add new charts as we go along. We are in the first phase, all completed. We reached our milestones on time. We'll continue with the next phases as we move along. The 2017 audit will be presented at the June 19th Committee of the Hall meeting. And within this report, I'm going to go through quickly, but the memo does include general fund income statement, a general fund year-to-date revenue detail report, major revenue, charts for the general fund, transfers completed, and an all funds income statement, as well as a cash investments report. All in for the year-to-date so far, revenues are coming in for the general fund at 11.5 million, expenditures are at 10.4 million, and bringing the revenues over expenditures by 1.1 million for the year. I'm just going to tab all the way through to the first page of the financial report for year-to-date budget reports, and this is generated now through our ERP system since we've transitioned over to that system. Again, you'll see that revenues sitting here at 11.5 million with about 35 percent of the year received. That's about 10 percent better than our target of 25 percent for a general fund budget. Just as a note, most of that is really attributed to the first installment of the property taxes. On this report, you'll see a pie chart sort of breaking down the revenue pie for property taxes, local taxes, and so on. Gives a little more detail that way. And then you'll also see the year-over-year change for revenues into the general fund in that chart. On page two, there's a chart for expenditures year-over-year, so you can see the trend line for expenditures for the general fund. And then we do a higher level look for expenditures that you can see by department within the general fund. And all in again, expenditures coming at 10.4 million for the March 31st year-to-date. And that's about 6 percent over budget, and that's the reason, again, going back to we receive our property taxes year-to-date, and that also attributes to an expenditure in our police and fire departments because of that. Not a lot of trend line data when you turn to page four yet, just because of the fact we're in the first quarter. I do want to just note that when you look at property taxes, some of the refunds that are attributed to property tax reassessments and as well as some of the senior freezes that folks took advantage of, you'll see part of your refunds there at 119 in the negative. And that's just because some of the refunds do take place in Cook County does reassessments. When we scan on down, you'll see that there are some things that we are monitoring, particularly with the state of Illinois. We're monitoring telecommunications tax, sales tax and others, PPRT and the like, just because of the fact that we are faced with some of the constraints that they've put on the city. On page five of that report, just going on down, we made a footnote here for ambulance fees that were increased by the city council in March. We're monitoring that. We did see an uptick in that. And that's a detail for revenues. When you page on through, there are charts that kind of give that year-over-year look, which is a good thing to do. We did put a footnote here for the state sales tax because the state is diverting the 2 percent administrative fee, and so we're showing that is a little bit of a downtick on that. And we page through, it's in the packet, you can review that yourselves, but again, one footnote for telecommunications tax, we do receive about $1.5 million annually. We're seeing a downtrend, and that's the reason why we're looking out to other revenue sources to make sure that we're offsetting some of those things that we're experiencing from the state of Illinois. I did want to turn past the charts on to the transfers completed per the budget. Those are outlined there. There are transfers that were adopted as part of the budget process, and we detailed those out just for transparency reasons, and they're fully detailed on page 15 of the memo. And then there's an all funds income statement, which just as a highlight, there is, again, in the general fund, there is a manager's hold just because of ongoing labor negotiations. We do foot that throughout the report. And then for, just to highlight, the key operating funds, such as utilities fund, we're coming in about 1.2 percent under budget for revenues. Of course, we'll see that uptick as we go through the summer months, expenditures are a little bit lower, 8 percent lower, and that's because we've got capital expenditures that occur throughout the warmer months. Refuse, another key operating fund, that's right on track for revenues, and we're about 3.6 percent under budget, and we're just monitoring. And those are ones we like to highlight. And then lastly, on page 17 of the memo, we have a cash and investment summary, chart on the bottom as well, will show you the breakdown in detail by fund and type. And so all in for the March 31st through that time period is 17.8 million that we have on hand. Half of that is in with the general fund with some assignments to that cash position. So that's the report, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Gallagher.
You're welcome.
This brings us to matters not in the agenda. I have two, is June 15th this week is the final day for accepting applications for appointment to the Alderman Seventh Board. And I, as I went through the staff report on Friday, I did want to thank the folks that are working on the Fourth of July Parade and the number of businesses that have stepped up that want to become part of our Fourth of July. So we should have a larger parade and a larger presence from businesses in the city. So I just thought that was Ms. Majikis and your, I mean, Ms. Ezek, and, well, Ms. Majikis is part of that, and Ms. Ezek, it's, you guys are doing a nice job of getting more businesses involved. Any other matters on the agenda? Mr. Cannon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You might recall, a few weeks ago, we had a huge water storm that inundated a lot of our neighborhoods. Out in my area, just after, outside of our southern border on Quentin Road, the road was so flooded, there was actually a car stalled in the road. The reason I bring up that story is the median strip out there is made of cement, and every year, big hunks of that cement come out and sit there on the roadway all year. That roadway was washed out so bad that a lot of those cement chunks were actually pushed out onto the street. They become, I'm not talking about little pebbles. Some of these things are quite sizable. Public Works has been aware of it. They just can't seem to get the county to do anything about it. It's a problem on Euclid also, when you go from Plum Grove Road West. It's really just, it's an accident waiting to happen. And I don't know why the county won't help us out, but they just don't seem to care. But it's really, could be a very, very serious issue. I've had two phone calls on it since that storm because all those rocks got pushed out onto the street. So if we could do anything about it, it would be great.
Thank you, Mr. Cannon. Mr. Horn, maybe you can send out a memo on the status of that? Thank you. Any other matters not on the agenda? There is a request to go into closed session tonight for personnel that falls under five ILCS number 120-2, C1 of the Illinois Open Meetings Act. It does require a motion and a formal vote. Is there such a motion? Mr. Bud Matts has made that, and Mr. Gallo has seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Diestis?
Yes.
Cannon? Bud Matts?
Yes.
Majikis?
Yes.
Gallo?
Yes.
Baner?
Yes.